All right. I'd like to call to order the Wednesday, September 28th, 2016 meeting of the Fairhaven School Committee. To remind everyone, we're being taped for public access and ask everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, may I be seated? So roll call of members. Mr. Beach.
Here.
Mrs. McKenna.
Here.
Mr. McNamara.
Here.
I am here. Ms. Kietler is absent with notice and Mrs. Powers is going to be late with notice. Delegation of visitors, who's here? Mr. Dr. Baldwin.
We have Matt Coes here receiving awards for the work that he's done in the Safe Roots to Schools. We have Mrs. Hartley-Madison, a guest, and we have the President of the FEA, Mrs. LeBlanc.
Excellent. All right. Approval of minutes from our September 14th, 2016 minutes regular session. Any questions or comments?
I abstain.
All right. Okay. So can I have...
Motion to approve?
Ooh, wait a minute. We can't do this. We can't do it. We've got to wait for Mrs. Powers.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I believe at other meetings I've been to that you don't necessarily have to abstain even if you weren't here. So you can either wait or you can vote in the affirmative. If you feel uncomfortable, I totally respect and understand that and you can wait.
I don't know if I trust you people.
Mrs. Powers will be here shortly.
Sure.
It's just table.
That's fine.
We have a motion to table. Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll wait. Has anyone signed up for public comment?
No, there is none.
Okay. And we have no student advisory committee member here tonight, so guessing maybe?
She couldn't make it. She did give me prior notice.
Okay, great. All right, so let's move on to reports and recommendations of the superintendent. So the first item of business is the receive information regarding the Safe Roots to School Award.
We have some members here this evening and we just had Selectman Esmondola walk in, which we're thrilled to have you here, Mr. Esmondola. And I believe we'll have Mrs. Hartley-Madison do a little bit of this and then Mr. Coes and the whole group, but we're very honored to have received some awards and Mrs. Hartley-Madison will present them.
Good evening. I was going to speak very shortly and introduce Mr. Coes as he really is the spearhead of the energy behind this project, but I just wanted to publicly acknowledge and appreciate the amount of work and time and effort and really passion for this idea of a bike bus at Wood School. Mr. Coes brought the idea to me many years ago and has just flown with it and has created something really amazing at Wood School. His daughter's now off to Hastings Middle School, but we still have the bike bus and I think that the best way to measure leadership is if what you do carries on after you leave and that's happening. So I just thank Mr. Coes for really bringing us such a really just a cool, neat, innovative thing to our school community that's really making a difference and just bringing kids' awareness to other ways to move and being physically fit and also just another way to extend our community into the Fairhaven community. So thanks to Mr. Coes for bringing this idea to fruition and seeing it through and, you know, I know he has big kind of ideas of how this could even expand in Fairhaven and I'm really a big fan and supporter of that and I'd love to see that happen. So I'd like to introduce Mr. Coes.
Thanks. Right off the cuff here. Mr. Chairman, committee members, Dr. Baldwin. So I'm Matt Coes. I'm a parent, bike committee chairman, and the Safe Roots to School Coordinator. In 2013 is when the bike bus started. I was part of the New Wood Schools' participation in NASTIOT Safe Roots to School Program. The first day, through 50 riders and dozens of parents, and along for the ride were Dr. Baldwin and Mrs. Hartley-Madison and they've been supporting the program ever since. From that first day, I've been bringing at least up to 30 kids and their parents to school every Friday, spring and fall, sometimes into November. And we're now in our fourth year and the second generation of parent volunteers are taking the helm and they're bringing the bike bus into the future. Over these three years, the bike bus has been recognized twice by NASTIOT, first for our initial achievements in attendance numbers and now for the ongoing success of the program. Plenty of schools hold annual walk of bike to school days and the Wood School Bike Bus does it every single week. And the bike bus is just part of what we're doing at Wood School. There's bike safety education, we've had a grant to put in racks, and it's a complete education and transportation program. With the success at the Wood School, we're just scratching the surface of what we can accomplish in Fairhaven overall in active transportation. In June, I made the trip up to the State House in my car to attend a ceremony recognizing communities around the Commonwealth for their efforts in the Safe Roots Program. Mrs. Hartley-Madison, I'm very pleased to present the Biking All-Star Award that was given that day to the V-Word L. Wood School in recognition of the bike bus program and the school's dedication to promoting self, safe, and healthy transportation for students.
Thank you very much. So it puts us in a very special place at our school.
I look forward to coming back and to this committee to share recognition for future programs at all the schools. Dr. Baldwin, thank you very much for your support and thank you for your time.
Yeah, thanks for organizing that. I was a participant, one of the first parents to do the 2013, I think, runs with Wood School and I miss it going to Hastings. I think it's a great thing and I hope it carries on. It's only going to help out the students in many ways, I think, and I look forward to maybe making a few Hastings runs then soon.
Right. At Hastings, I am looking to figure out and advertise Safe Roots. So just taking that part of the name of the program. I see kids in unsafe places.
Sure, sure.
My daughter's first.
Route 6 is tough.
Yeah, and there are easier ways to get around town and we're going to set up some maps.
That's great. That's great. Bob, did you ride to Boston for that day to... No. Oh, I thought you were.
Does anybody else have any comments?
No, just thank you very much. It is an awesome, you know, and moving on to, you know, to the next, whatever, how many years it goes on, boy, it's just going to grow and grow and grow and hopefully it'll keep going and it's all thanks to both you and Mrs. Hartley-Madison. So thank you.
Weather permitting, so when it first started, I borrowed a family member's bike and borrowed a helmet because I was a bad boy. I now have my own bike and my own helmet. So weather permitting, Friday, I will attempt to join with a tie and jacket with a helmet and my own bike. So we'll see how that works, but thank you so much because it's, you give so much and it means a lot to us, so thank you.
What Dr. Baldwin didn't tell you is that it's a huffy with a banana seat.
That's what I used to say.
Did you have skateboard helmet?
I did, I did.
Well, Mr. Coes, thank you very much for what you do. It's, I mean, it's certainly people like you that, you know, just make this school district what it is. So thank you very much for your help and just the things you bring to this, to Wood School and to all our schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are going to pass over the next item on our agenda and move on to receive and place on file Administration Regulation GCA-R Paraprofessional.
Mr. Chair, this is a administrative reg job description that has been about a year in progress. We began it when we negotiated and then we had some transition with Student Services, Special Education. We've had individuals sit down. All parties are acceptable with where we are with this job description, so it's just to receive and place on file as an administrative reg. We're excited to have our job description finalized for paraprofessionals.
Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Baldwin on the paraprofessional job description that you received in your packet? Mrs. Powers, welcome.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
All right, no, I don't have any.
All right. All right. So we completed that portion of the agenda. Now that Mrs. Powers is here, let's, can I have a motion to untable the approval of minutes post-September 14th, 2016 regular session?
Motion to untable. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So now that we've, everyone's reviewed the minutes, do I have a motion to approve the September 14th, 2016 regular session minutes?
Somewhere.
Secured it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
All right, one abstention. All right, moving on then. Receive information regarding the trip school lease. Dr. Baldwin.
Mr. Chair and members of the committee, we will be going into executive session to discuss this issue at the conclusion of our regular open session meeting. However, I do want to publicly state, because sometimes misinformation is the worst information, that we will not be declaring this building surplus. We do intend to move forward even though the Nemasket Group is leaving at the end of the month. I understand there was something in the local media about this. I just, at our next meeting, wanted to inform you that we do not intend to declare the building surplus. We, the first step is to speak with the committee as we have the right to do an executive session regarding a lease and then obviously work with the town once we develop a strategy. So I just wanted to publicly state that we do not intend to declare that building surplus.
Does anybody have any comments or questions? All right, moving on. Receive draft 2016-2017 District Improvement Plan.
Mr. Chair, there's a lot of paper in front of the members this evening and we will, from this point forward, submit the final product electronically in PDF form so that you don't have to have it all in front, but I just wanted some background information of the beginnings of handing out some information to you and this information has in it some analysis of data. So what I briefly want to do is the portion that is in front of you that says District and School Accountability, that is, the cover of this is what both the Department of Ed and other entities who are grounded in current of the best practices in our profession talk about what district and school accountability should be. This past week, information was freed from embargo and I just wanted to give you an explanation of what the accountability system is about and where the levels come in. And so there is, straight from DESI's website, there's an explanation of the accountability and assistance level in which the district is a Level 2 district. We have a Level 1 school. The district assumes the level of its lowest performing school. And while we're all held harmless, I heard a great comment the other day that the way the state is acting is, yes, we're held harmless today with whatever our current numbers are, but it's really harm-deferred because once held harmless is lifted, the harm will be back and wherever you fall, you fall. So it behooves us as a district to move really fast to improve and get better so that we can not just stay at Level 2, but move in the direction toward Level 1. And that is our goal and that is something that we would all love to attain within this accountability system. The next thing is it shows you the seven points that DESI scores it on and some of those points are high school points like graduation rate and dropout rate. And then what it does is it just goes from the district perspective with data. So all students in 2015, from the district perspective, were given a cumulative progress and performance index, a PPI of 46. We are now at 66. However, you will see that we break down student groups and in high needs, it goes from 62 to 57. What I met with, with the principals this morning is they will start to put together for their school improvement plans this data that will be individual to the schools. So this is district data and once the schools put together this data, obviously it will look different and it will be unique to the schools. The next areas that they, they look at are the proficiency gap narrowing and it gives the district baseline, which is 2011, the 15 number, the 16 number, and the six-year target and where you should be. And again, it's broken down for all students and high need students, which is important, and it gives numbers there. Growth is the next area and it gives the growth in the 2015, 16, and then the six-year target. The target for growth is always to be one point, percentage point ahead of where the state is of 50% and that's why the target is 51. Dropout rate is pretty self-evident, then the graduation rate for four-year and five-year cohorts, and then the final one is extra credit where you receive points with extra credit and it shows where we are with that. Our high school is in a dilemma. How do you get extra credit moving people out of failure when no one's failed this year in English Language Arts? The fact that Fairhaven High School is in its third year of being Level 1 is unprecedented and thank goodness the paper got that quote right today. They got the quote wrong about the growth mindset, not the gross mindset that was quoted, but we'll get to that in a little bit. But the, it's very hard for the high school to maintain its Level 1 status when some of these points you attain are on extra credit and this year the high school had all of their students pass in ELA, which is amazing, but they'll receive zero points next year because they can't get any kids out of warning or failing. So it does fluctuate sometimes and I just prepare you for that. And then at the bottom, it talks about what school percentiles were and where the schools rank and they really fluctuate and that's something we have already begun to address. We've met with the schools. Today, we met for a large amount of time with the principals. They're meeting again early next week so that when you get your school improvement plans, there will be specific plans of action there. So that is the district and school accountability portion of what you have. The next one, I do not intend to go through an analysis of district data, but I want to show you what the schools will be doing. And you'll get it all in one table. It'll be easy to read, but what we've done is we've taken each grade level and you will see what the, it's not, you not only will see in this what grade 4 did in ELA from 15 and 16. So grade 4 in ELA went from 52 to 59. That's really irrelevant to the grade 4 teacher. The grade 4 teacher needs to know what the grade 3 students did last year because those are their current students. So this is how we break it down by, and these are the district numbers. The buildings will be breaking it down. What's most important here is that you read the top bullets and then you look to the right and you say, who are those nine kids who in grade 3 in English Language Arts were at Level 1? Who are they and how do we improve what they do? Who are those 21 kids in Level 2? This is where you really get down to peeling the onion and getting deep into the data. So it's not, you know, the first stuff is really neat to see, the accountability, but this is where it really gets, how do you identify who is it? And you can read the four bullets. Identify which students need additional time and support. Identify which students need enrichment and extension because they are knocking it out of the park at Levels 4 and 5. So this is what our people do. They start looking at this data, breaking it down. It is broken down all the way through and this is the kind of stuff that when the paper calls, they ask, how did you do? And unfortunately, they just look at it on one day and it stays in the paper for 365 days. And so we tend to accentuate the positive, but there's also areas for growth. There are absolute clear areas for growth throughout this and that's what our people are doing right now. They're mining the data, they're trying to dig deep into it. Again, you get to our end product, which is the high school at the end, and you have 94% of your kids at proficient and advanced at Fairhaven High School. That's, that's amazing and it's consistent. It's not a fluke and in math, the state average is 78 and we're at 90. And it's blowing away the state average. And in growth in math for the last four years, it's been 62.5, 73, 63.5, and this year 69. It's just unprecedented growth. So our final product, as we look at the K5 continuum, while there are bumps, when we get to the end point, something right is happening. And now it's time to address those bumps so we can push it even higher. But again, you get to a point where it's pretty high and it's going to be really hard for them to maintain. We want them to maintain, but it's going to be really hard for them to show significant improvement. Finally, the teaching and learning portion is nothing more than the playbook. Again, grounded in the best and current practices of what is the best in our business. This is the playbook that they utilize, the key actions that they follow, and it is the driver for the example that I'm about to hand out to you now. So what you're getting now is the district and school improvement portion and drumroll will be the last page of the goals and we'll get to those goals. But I want to show you the format that will be followed and some of the menu items that will take place. So our principals and teachers and everyone sit down and they analyze this data and then they say, well, what do we do? The key actions that we do now are found in this district and school improvement piece. And you'll see the goals actually are on the third page in, but if we make powerful teaching and learning the central focus of the Fairhaven Public Schools, then we look at this data and we say, first and foremost, we need to continue to improve the climate conditions and culture of the Fairhaven Public School District. I firmly believe that it is our culture that drives our success, a culture that believes that all children can learn at high levels, no excuses, period. But then it starts to get into, from the district level now, you'll see that I've taken the data that I've just given to you this evening and don't forget, next meeting is the one we really get deep into this stuff, and start to show some goals. The district will realize a 5% increase in the 2017 CPI for all students in ELA in math for grades 3 through 8 and in ELA math and science for grades 6 through 12. The district will realize a 5% increase in the 2017 CPI for high need students in ELA in math for grades 3 through 8 and ELA math and science in 6 through 12. The district will see at least 10% of students in the warning category move into the needs improvement in ELA in math. So those are, those are goals based on the previous data that you've seen and then how do you accomplish those goals? If you turn the page, you now get to 12 key actions and they're numbered and then under those key actions are the activities. The activities are only the first menu and we cannot and will not do all these activities. It's not possible in a school year, so the directive given to the principals today was prioritize. We need to prioritize what needs to happen first and foremost. And I'm not going to go through each activity under each key action, but the key actions are broken down very simply. How do we allot our time? Do we need to spend more time in a certain area because maybe we don't spend enough time? Very clear, very clear in this one is integrated science at the elementary level. We need to spend more time in that, but does that prioritize children who have not gotten it yet in grade 5 in ELA? We, our principals will look at that and they'll make that decision about where the prioritization is, but it's something that we've talked about for a number of years. We need to address sooner than later. It's on here. And if, honestly, this is a one-year district improvement plan, there is no way this gets fully completed and accomplished without a two- to three-year period of time. So each year, we need to reassess what's checked off the list, what needs to be added to the list, and what needs to be tweaked from the list. So all you see in front of you here are a number of activities under key actions that range from determining the 6 to 12 science academic pathways based on the new next-generation standards. Rather than putting together the pathways and then finding out the standards at the end of last year, we waited for the standards to be developed and now we can develop the pathways. We can now develop a pathway, grade 6 through 12 in science, that gets us to the end. You can see the elementary sciences on there. World Language, what are our pathways? Is that a prioritization, but it's on. Elementary Specialists, I will tell you that one of the big district improvement plan goals is district digital conversion. We need to become a 21st century district in which we convert to digital and have a district digital conversion plan. And that means, how do we do that over the years? It's not just putting a computer in everyone's hands. It's curriculum, instruction, and assessment driving what goes on that computer. It's not the tail that wags the dog, it's the other way around. And so with that being said, one of the things we need to look at, starting from what goes on in this room down, is what does instructional technology, what does media look like, starting from your library, your computer technology, your media at a high school level, and then what does it look down at the elementary level? What does it look like at the middle school level? What should all children be equipped with at what grade and time? That's going to take time to do it right, but we have to have that as a goal immediately. So I don't want to go through all of this, the Go Math program at the elementary level. It's in, but let's figure out how to make it great. We just don't buy a program and say, oh, that'll fix everything. You need to implement it correctly. The same with Pearson reading. So this allows us to have a game plan, a blueprint, hit the ground running. You will get the formal of this with operations, district and school leadership, all the others at the next meeting and well before the next meeting. It's all in the can and ready to go, but I didn't want to give you too much at this meeting. What I'd like us to end with, before I stop, is page 3 of District Improvement Plan Goals. This is my belief, and I thought about this today and I think I'm going to go with it. A late, great committee member used to tell us and explain all the time when we did policies and administrative regulations, the difference. And he would say that the policies are the general overarching and the administrative regs are the detail. So I will tell you that in front of you is the general overarching for the district. It is up to the buildings where the rubber hits the road to now develop the ad reg. So I want you to think of the district improvement plan goals as the policy and then when you start to see the school improvement plans falling in line with this, then those are how it's actually implemented. We're trying to set the direction from the district level and then have it fully implemented and executed at the building level. That's the way it should work. It should be a through line that goes all the way through to the educators and what they plan for their goals. They need that direction, so make powerful teaching and learning the central focus of the Fairhaven Public School District. You can see that there are A through E subgoals to that. Provide a continuum of resources and support to enable administrators and educators to identify each student's academic, social, emotional, and behavioral health and well-being. Has to be a tantamount goal for us. It's huge. How the principals tend to deal with this, what they set as goals, they're going to know better than anyone. Develop and implement a district digital conversion plan that systematically incorporates all aspects of the district's teaching and learning, which you have in front of you, planned as its first priority. In other words, let curriculum, instruction, and assessment drive how we have a district digital conversion plan, not we bought computers, why aren't we using them correctly? It should be the other way around. Communicate regularly with families using two-way communication channels, including careful and prompt response to communications from families. Promote the learning and growth of all students and success of all staff by ensuring safe, efficient, and effective learning environments, using resources to implement appropriate curriculum, staffing, and scheduling, and develop and implement a long-term, sustainable district and school leadership/operations plan that provides the support and resources to expand and enhance powerful teaching and learning. So this is the year we have been totally underfunded, well below net school spending in the area of district administration. We have had reports recommend to us that we do not have the support and resources in district administration. This is the year that we have to say, how do we do facility maintenance? How do we do operations? How do we take care of all of this and develop and implement a plan on those lines? So there isn't much that can't fall under these seven goals. So there isn't much that can't fall under these seven goals. If there is, that's why we're here tonight to get your input. But I wanted to give you the preliminary draft district improvement plan. You will have the whole shebang in your hands well prior to next meeting. And then the meeting prior, after that will be the school improvement portion. So I will stop and open it up for questions.
Anybody have any questions, comments, Mr. Powers?
I had been, it has any, is this process still the same at the schools? Using the school council to help them do their school improvement plans or is that changing?
It should be, it should be.
I know, new teacher, well, some of the, some former school council members from last year were asking, when are we going to get started? So I'm just wondering if, you know, that's going, if maybe the process had changed or that they'll be contacted, is that what you expect?
So the data came out yesterday.
Yeah, yeah, and that's what I told them, I said, the data's not there yet.
The data came out yesterday. Um, I felt like a college kid because this was an all-nighter to get this ready for today. And we met with the district leadership team this morning. So the process has not changed. Pursuant to law, school councils will be involved. But we have to provide them with the direction. That's why we're here tonight with you. We need to drive this bus and let the school councils in on it. But we, we know where it should be heading and it needs to happen now, you know? So absolutely, the process will not have changed.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
I realize that our job is money. Our job is to advocate and support and gather, you know, funds and resources and administer that. But how do we, can we, should we work in like developing a budget to sustain these goals? Like some, I'm not sure if it's a sub-goal or if that's your goal or... Because developing a budget to support these things when staff needs resources, when your, when your staff needs resources, when teachers need resources, how do we get that up to the right level where we can do the support? Because people might say, well, we can do this, this and this, but we have no money, so we're not going to ask for it, maybe tie that into...
We're changing the way the budget process will work with, insofar as we, so we had a discussion today. It's great to get the data that you have. It's called summative assessment data that happens once a year and comes way too late. We need, at the moment, common formative assessments that are computer-based in the hands of our teachers yesterday. That costs money. If you do it right, it costs a lot of money. But it's the right thing to do. So the answer to that, Mr. Veach, is to develop and implement a long-term sustainable operations and leadership plan that provides, and this is how I've always turned, termed the budget, the support and resources that we need to expand and enhance. You've talked to me about this over and over again. Do not maintain with the status quo. Support and resources is our budget. Expand and enhance means we move forward. So the avenue and the goal to accomplish that means, and, and I will tell you, that is one that needs to be done this year. It's going to be one of my goals. How do we reshuffle district leadership and administration? And that includes working with the town and believe me, it is night and day. Night and day, the relationship. Today, we had, there's a meeting tomorrow that the town has and the town asked for something and Mrs. Tavares electronically sent something to Ann O'Brien and issue over. The, the cooperation is amazing, but we need to put that in here. And, and have it as, as part of the, part of the presentation that you'll get within two weeks is support and resources, expand and enhance. So I'm, I'm hoping that that language gives us the opportunity to do that.
Thanks.
Anybody else?
Just a question, and you had touched on it, about the percentage gains, especially is what I'm focusing on, on the subscripts of point one. 10% goals, 5% goals, aggressive, should you decide them?
Yes.
Where we come from, goals need to be achievable as well as measurable. Well, the measurable part is easy but possibly late.
Right.
So I would just question those goals for 2016, 2017? Or is that a longer term and should you break it up? It's just a general question.
I, I think it's a great point and I appreciate the point because I've always thought if you set the bar high, you come a little short of it, you've still gotten close. So I'm not against setting a bar high and failing to get to the bar, but boy, we've moved it. That's how we've kind of done business. There are some that are, that are so in extreme need of moving the bar really high, really fast, that I think we need to be that aggressive. I'm okay with you coming back to me saying, you as a district, Mr. Superintendent, failed in all of your student learning goals because you didn't get there. Well, you know what? Some of the, some of the pockets need to get there. So I appreciate that and as long as we know that you're right. They need to be smart, they need to be realistic, they need to be measurable. There is also a sense of urgency here that while we're in held harmless or harm deferred, we need to get moving. So I think in the next two weeks, when we formally go through this process, it's a discussion that we have. Maybe we tone it back a touch, but I'm okay with keeping them very aggressive.
Okay. Anything else?
I just want to say, you know, I think the goals are, I mean, yeah, I agree with Mr. McNamara, they're very aggressive. I think overall in looking quickly at the data, you know, we had some areas of, of great improvement and we had some areas where it wasn't so much. And I wouldn't even say that it wasn't so much, it's just the status quo. And I, you know, a few years ago, you had had a goal to change the culture of the school district. And I'm not so sure that it's happened. And I'm, you know, in some cases, and, and I'm kind of tired of it a little bit. So the, the thing that bothers me, and I'll, and I'll tell you, and I'm going to kind of switch hats for a second. As a parent, I attended the middle school open house and it was great. I know, I have a son in eighth grade, and over the last three years, you know, and he's in his third year at the middle school, that he's had great teachers. I have all the faith in the world in the people in that building. At the same time, I, I do feel like as though there needs to be an adjustment of attitudes. I was at the open house and I heard in one of the classrooms that your child may not, your children may not fare so well on the science portion of the test because they were only offered half a year of science in sixth grade. Does anybody else, did anybody else hear that?
I heard the same thing.
That I sat in on.
Yeah.
And I was appalled. I didn't say anything, I just sat there and I walked away. And, and I just left there after, you know, and then I, I was in, you know, I was in one classroom where the guy was so inspiring that I wanted to take his class. And then I heard that and it just took the wind out of my sails. And it bothered me more so because I know this person is a good teacher. And I know that the people that my son has had are good teachers. And he's learned everything that I think he should learn at, in that school. But the numbers don't add up, right? I mean, clearly it's, it's not performing to its potential. And I think it can do a lot better. I know it can do a lot better. And I just think that things like that, parents don't go to an open house to hear that their child is probably going to struggle on the eighth grade science portion of, you know, whatever test it's going to be because they got half a year in sixth grade. I had one teacher in sixth grade that taught me everything. And now I'm, I work on submarines for the US Navy, so I'm okay. You know, it's, it's an excuse and that's exactly what it is. It's an excuse. And I'm tired of excuses and I think everyone should be tired of excuses. I think people need to work to their potential. And I think that there is great potential there to, to, I don't want to see that. I don't, I don't think anybody wants to see a couple of these numbers. And I think every school in this district can be performing as, you know, some of the higher ones. And so, you know, I, I see these goals and, and they're, and they're, they're great. It's similar to what we see every year. But I, I just think at this point, I've been on this committee now since 2011, and I, and it's the same thing, you know, over and over and over again. And I just think that, stop with the excuses, you know? And, and if there's something that I'm not doing on this, in this role, if we're not providing what's needed to meet the goals, then tell me. Because I want to make sure that we are. If, if somebody is not doing, getting what they need, I mean, as far as they, the, you know, all the buildings, the envelopes of the buildings are in great shape, they're bright, they're, you know, they're, they seem like they're decent places to learn now. I just, what can we do to, to change the mindset that we can't do it because we can't?
Message received. And the pockets that are highly successful have the culture and the climate. And that's why that's on here. And the pockets that aren't there yet need to realize how we are becoming successful. Join, it's time to join the party.
That's what I mean.
So message received. And we're going to work hard to get everybody to join the party because there are a lot of people working really, really hard with purpose and meaning and making a difference. And well said and message received. I can't say much more about that.
That's all I have. Anybody else say anything? All right. All right, so Dr. Baldwin, we'll look forward to our next meeting though where we'll be able, the plan is to, the district improvement plans, I mean, the school improvement plans will not be, will they be, they're going to be several meetings from now because as Mrs. Powers had said, that process needs to take place. We'll have time to digest this and will it potentially, and then we'll get the district improvement plan on our next meeting?
You'll have it well in advance, you'll have the portions that Mr. Veach is talking about. Again, they won't have the, during the budget season is when we'll start talking about how to build this and obviously the actions that need to take place. But we'll at least have the goals set forth and, and the key actions that need to happen so that we can make the decisions that are supported so we can move forward, yes. Across the whole district, this is a snapshot of the teaching and learning portion.
Thank you. All right, discussion of upcoming events. Our next school committee meeting is October 12th, 2016. Is there any other upcoming events?
I, just to inform the committee, because it kind of sort of is a political event. I don't know if you've been made aware of it, but the South Coast Development Partnership from UMass Dartmouth on October 5th, from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. in the UMass Law courtroom is having an educational attainment summit with Secretary Peiser will be there. And yours truly will be on the panel. I have 10 minutes to talk about issues and dilemmas in our district and in the South Coast. And I plan on using my 10 minutes. But I, I just share the invite because I'm hearing that a lot of legislators and, and representatives may be there. And it's not just a community and South Coast Development Partnership piece. It's also a, you know, a, a political event in which the secretary will be there to hear what's going on in the South Coast.
Is there any room for our participating, I mean, how, how would, how does one attend?
There is an RSVP. I can, I can forward this to Mrs. Tavares, who can forward this to you tomorrow. If, if you are so able.
Okay. Anything else?
Real quickly, we're starting our after-prom meeting starting Monday. We always do the first Monday of each month at 6:30 here at Fairhaven High. So for the junior and, and senior parents, and if you know anybody, please join us because we do need all the help we can get for our next event in May. And actually, that's about it. Thank you.
All right, moving on to new business, vote regarding ballot question number two. So if, if you're not all aware, there is a ballot question on, on this, during this year's election, number two, to raise the cap, a, on charter schools, essentially to, to get rid of the cap, essentially, right? I mean, so that, we're typically right now, every year, the legislature votes on what the cap should be and it's, you know, controlled by the legislature. This would essentially remove those controls. And so, you know, charter schools are definitely a problem for, for our public school districts. Dr. Baldwin, I don't know if you...
Sure.
Want to, want to jump in if you have anything?
Sure. In, in a number of roles, over and above just being the superintendent of schools, serving with the Mass Association of School Superintendents, there is some pretty strong information out there that has not even hit the town of Fairhaven yet, yet, as strongly as it has hit some other communities. There are some communities that are losing millions of dollars from their appropriation each and every year to fund charter schools that are going up all over the Commonwealth. And what's happening is, in Fairhaven specifically, it's, it's $26,000 that there's, there's some digital conversion or there's some, some dollars right there that could be kept. At the state level, it's $408 million that is channeled from the public schools, right from the chapter 70 money to help fund the charter schools. And yet, teachers, not member of unions, the teachers have different sets of rules. And quite honestly, if special education doesn't fit the need at a charter and they can't provide that, the child comes right back or those services are provided by the town. So we talk strongly about all schools when we speak and, or all students, should I say? I can honestly say that this really isn't about all students. So that's from the, the realm of what I see. They don't serve the same proportion of special needs, low income, et cetera. It's, it's, it's a way for, to create an even deeper division of equity and a deeper division of students who can and will leave to go somewhere else and some other students who are just trapped in staying where they are. So one could argue that a charter should have been set up to offer what can't be offered in the regular school, but that's not really the case. What it's doing is they're going into urbans, they're going into other communities and decimating some of those communities far worse than ours. However, everything comes around everywhere and it's a matter of time. So there are well over 100 school committees that have voted to talk about opposing ballot question number two. And it is my recommendation that this school committee takes a formal vote and adds to the list. Because somewhere down the line, when people respect the will of committees and people respect what teachers have to say and what superintendents have to say, and they go to the ballot box, this is something that does have an effect on the Fairhaven Public Schools and the town of Fairhaven and the greater good of the South Coast region. So I just, if there is language to join the hundreds of, well over 100 school committees that have voted to do this.
So I'd like to add that, I mean, we sit here as a body and we oversee the local control of our school district. Charter schools do not have that requirement. They are not held to the same standards that we are held to. Our chapter 70 funding, you know, the formula we all know is flawed. But we fight tooth and nail for every dollar that we get. And they are essentially siphoning dollars from the public school districts. And, and they're not held accountable by the same standards that we're held accountable by. And while we have to educate every child, they have the option to not. And, and in, in my opinion at least, it's, it's to, to eliminate the cap, we, we almost had a situation in this town where there was the threat of potentially having a building going to a charter school. And I believe at the time, you know, we as a committee fought that tooth and nail, that that was not going to happen. That threat is still very real. And if one were to open in this town, I mean, we, we don't have a failing district. Overall, our district is very healthy and it's doing well. It has definitely requires improvement in areas, but we are, we are doing very well. So, but that threat is very real and if it were to happen, it, it would, it would kill us. It would hurt very bad. So that's why this was put on the agenda. Like Dr. Baldwin said, there's over 100 communities that, school committees that have voted formally to oppose ballot question number two. And that list is published on the MASC website. And it's also, you know, widely published in the news throughout the state. So with that, I'll open the floor for any questions or comments.
I think it's been an issue for a long time and I think it's time to say no. For sure.
Agreed.
Anyone else?
I'm also in agreement.
So do we vote this evening to do that, make a motion?
Yeah, so I mean, I think we, we've been through the, the details. So just make, put a, you know, motion to be resolved that the Fairhaven School Committee opposes lifting the cap on Commonwealth charter schools and is opposed to ballot question number two. I have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All those opposed? All right. It is unanimous. Okay, moving on to questions from individual school committee members. All right, so I will say that I attended the middle school open house and overall it was a very positive experience. Like I said, there was very many classes that, my wife went through the, the sixth grade, I went through eighth grade. And, and I was just very impressed with everything that was going on. I felt like he's getting what he needs. And, and I, and I will say that I, I really want to take Mr. Lezak class. It was, he, he... It was, he, he just gave a very good presentation, like made, made you feel so excited just to be in the room and that he loves it, so. And I don't mean to call him out specifically, but, but everyone was, was wonderful, so it was a, it was a good time.
I have one question. Did you get any feedback from how the middle school looks? I mean, for parents, did they say, wow, you know? I mean, I was impressed, but...
I, a bunch of people that I am friendly with were congregating in the hallway on the way out, and they were like giddy, happy with the way it looked and the way the teachers were. And some had new, new kids in sixth grade and some had eighth graders. So they were, everyone was just really, really pleased and excited.
They should be, it's beautiful.
It is. It looks great.
Made me, made me very hopeful.
You know, not everybody noticed what was different, but they just felt like it looked really great.
Yeah. I also attended, and I have to say, it was a good, positive experience. I didn't share the, the one teacher's comments about maybe some shortcomings could happen. Other than that, everybody was well organized, everybody was very timely and used up all their time allotments, and the facilities were sparkling clean. Everything looked great, but there was one common thread. This is a minor observation, but it was a common theme. It was almost distracting in some rooms. You look up, and, and the very inexpensive tiles on the, some of the ceilings. I remember one particular room was completely like broken up and hanging there, looked like it was gonna fall at any second. And other tiles in other rooms, you could see where mismatched paint, things like that. Very minor, but sometimes it's low-hanging fruit. So that was, it was a common theme in these rooms, these inexpensive ceilings that could easily be repaired in, in short time. So maybe on the list somewhere, but other than that, the school looked great.
Great.
All right. We do need to go to executive session, and we will be returning. So I need a roll call vote to go to executive session.
See your name?
What, what is it?
Mr. Veatch.
Mr. Veatch, yeah.
Yes.
No, I wasn't thinking of your name, I was thinking, I need to ask for a motion. Listen, I'm, I'm inexperienced, okay? So, Mr. Veatch?
Yes.
Mrs. McKenna?
Yes.
Mr. McAmara? Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
And me, I'm a yes, so with that, we will go to executive session.